Okay, I call the order, the city council meeting for October 14th, 2025, for the city of Hayes. And we'll have a roll call.
Christine Don.
Daniel Aldes.
Avvin.
Rose Philporkel.
Candice Blake.
Lydia Brian-Loudes.
And Harvey Davis. And city publicists. And I'm going to have a few follow up comments. I think most of you all know that it is your proclamation designated yesterday, October 14th as indigenous people state. And our assistant manager put also notice on Facebook, we put this on Facebook and on the website, so. Hope everybody. It's comfortable with that. Certainly am. And for Texas State. They've lost too close game. And they're. They're only three and three, but they have a pretty good coach now, I was thinking that. You know, they're going into a pretty good conference next year. And this probably their good coach won't be hired by. A bigger school, so they'll keep their coach. So that's my Texas data update, I also wanted to tell you that. They, you know, we do our, we were required by law to have an audit every year. And now we're required to have it done within the first six months of the year. And there are now penalties, potential penalties, if you don't complete it within six months. And so we'll be, so this is something that we need to make sure is done in the time and manner of. Then a email to our auditors. Reminding them that we need it done within six months.
Can I ask a question about that? There's two monitors that are who make sure that.
Well, that's.
That haven't said the Secretary of State, he does that.
Or, you know. If it's not done in six months. A city can point to the attorney general.
The H E.
And so. The city of Odessa then trouble. Other cities, a few other cities. And I I learned about this by reading the newsletter, and I hope everybody's getting clean effects, we need to believe. And they, they have good, good information, I want a lot of stuff from that. If you go down and read it. Stuff. Thank you. Take action to, item four A is take actions in three minutes for the meeting on October 14th and September 8th, 2025. I think we just have October 8th. Ready for.
September, it's a, July and September.
So I think the minutes have been sent out to anybody. So do we have a motion of approval?
I'll have the basho accept the ballots.
My second, you have motion?
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. And. Your sign. Have it done. Then item four D is received and. Take action to approve financial statements for September and August, 2025. Uh, they're included in your backup. Just going to make some points on September because it's more recent. So this, this is our year end. Statement. The. We ended up the year with. One point eight eight seven million dollars in, in Texas Pool and Broadway Bank. We have those two, well, actually, we have two accounts of Broadway Bank. And expenses were larger than revenue, about forty three thousand. But that includes really a capital expenditure, which is well, number three. Which I think we have all the costs in that, which is a hundred and sixty one thousand. And. And we had a lot more revenue. From our water sales this year versus last year. So there more than sixty five thousand dollars more in water sales last year, which. Was a big help because we, our interest income was less because interest rates were. Come down and they've lowered interest rates one time. So far this year. And they'll probably lower it. More and they may have to lower quite a bit more because, you know. We may have. Superior financial problems because. Mismanagement. Or whatever, so, but these statements, which are basically done on. Measuring the cash in and the cash out. Cash basis account. Which will, for the year end, we. We converted to accrual accounting, so what, what I have to do. And that, and that's what's audited is our accrual basis financial statement, so it, it will change quite a bit. The, the numbers. Uh, maybe the bottom, yeah, the bottom line, I was to think. Um, but here are the major things that we do, I had to add depreciation, which is. You know, that doesn't affect cash, it's just sort of an attempt to. Go lower the value of your fixed assets because of wear and tear. And then we have to update accounts payable and accounts receivable. Uh, so like last year, we, we. We calculated our accounts that were. Bills that were incurred in, in the current year, but paid in the subsequent year. You know, usually most of them in October, so, you know, it takes a little while to get that, but I didn't. I didn't change that number because we're doing the, the cash basis for the whole year, so I have to. Take last year's accrual and then add this year's accrual, and it probably be, end up being about the same number. Uh, the same thing with received bills. And we have to update our pension obligations, which should be kind of going. Down, down each year, I mean, I think we had at least one death, maybe two deaths. Uh, during this year with Wayne passing away. And, uh. What's Wayne's name?
Pat.
Pat, she passed away too. I'm, I'm not.
For support.
For, yeah. I'm not sure if they both passed away this year or maybe Wayne missed the last year.
Yeah.
But that, that changes things, so I, I think the only retire, I think the only retirees we would have would be Anthony Davidson and, I mean. So. But our, like our pension obligation that we have to be paid is like nineteen dollars a month. And you were able to get on the website and do that, thank you. And of course, we have to capitalize the well number three that. Told you about, so that's taken out of an expense and put it into our assets on our balance sheet.
And the employees that you mentioned recipients of pension? Or they were enrolled at the planet sometime in the pension?
Where, they're recipients.
Connie's not retired, she's not retired.
Well, I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, she didn't retire, but I'm saying hey.
I understand, okay. And so. We can, however, if you ask, we'll, we'll look that up, tell you, okay? Be happy to.
Yeah, we could, have a question.
Sure.
On the. Frontier, we have bankrupt, do we have frontier invoice?
Ask you?
Uh.
Yes.
Uh.
Frontier.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, they, these are for the phone lines that we have one at Elliot Ranch and one. At City of Hayes Water Site.
I just got spectrum on my mind, so it's frontier.
These are, okay, these are monthly expenses.
Okay.
Those loud.
We, we have spectrum, but I thought everybody has spectrum when it's a frontier.
Yeah.
Where are the charges from, where's it coming from, Elliot Ranch?
What's on the agenda, we forgot that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Question on McKenna Loop, uh, repaid that twenty six one hundred. I, I thought McKenna Loop was county, not city. I, I'm wrong about that, obviously.
Are you looking, well, uh, you're looking at our fixed assets?
Yeah, yes.
McKenna Loop, uh.
Repaid that.
Hundred and twenty three, no, that's the improvement of the, the road. We, it's county up from, from. McKenna Loop till, till Country Lane.
Oh.
Then beyond Country Lane is ours.
Yes, to the limits.
So we did that job of.
Right, over there, all sides, but here's the county.
Yeah.
Okay, this side.
There's a sign up there on the side of the right away that says county magnus, and that's the limits.
Thanks.
Good to see people looking at them. With the, maybe. We not finding a mistake or something. Do, better you find it than somebody else. Oh, I did, I did on this one, you know, with the city hall rental. I put that in miscellaneous income. That's where it should go, anything that we deposit in the banks. That is the reduction of an expense. I don't know why we had an expense, city, city hall rental. I think that was missed, that should have been an income.
Okay.
On the account. But I did change that, but. Uh, any other questions? And of course, when, when I get the final statement done, do the depreciation schedule and all that stuff. Presented as a year end statement. It will hopefully be the same as the audited year end statement. So, um. We'll move on the item four C, consider and take actions regarding updates. For the fall dumpster day, and can you give us an update?
Yeah. I did. Thank you Candice, who provided me with the contact for Dan Slovac at TDS. We are scheduled, ready for our day. Believe that's. November twenty second. Yeah, and it'll be the usual, you know, uh. Forty yard below off at each of our websites, Tango Wood and Country Lane, and we'll be there from eight AM to twelve PM. Already posted about it on our social media page and on our website, but I will, of course, repost that as we get a little closer. Who's in our haze happenings as well.
Also, is it going to have it picked up that afternoon?
Yes, yep, he called me to ask about that.
It's going to be dropped up in the morning and it's not going to be dropped in the night before.
Yes, he called, I think there may have been notes about that.
Yeah.
It's going to be full by the time it's.
He called me to ask about that specifically.
I talked to him at length about that last time.
Yep, so it'll be same, same routine as our last.
You know, that's great, thank you for doing that.
Do we have a list of volunteers to start that today if you don't have one?
Yeah.
Good idea.
Will that that thing do?
Yeah. Oh, sign up. Good family, buddy.
I say that too.
I have something else.
I'll do, I'll do. I'm bringing up a list. We'll not, we'll not bring it on.
We are too.
All right, do you have any comments you would like for everyone to hear?
I have, I have, for trash days, I have a lot of stuff to bring.
Okay, thank you. Um, would you like?
We have a lot of stuff.
We need a list of what's allowed and not allowed. To hand out to the people that come.
Yeah, based on the website too.
I know, then we go up there, then we will just have a little paper to give out. Be glad you.
Yeah. Well, that's why we have all the cases, yes, sir.
If we have a list of what's, what's allowed, then if we monitoring and see something that loud, it says, I'm sorry to tell you, but it says here, there's not a lot, here, here's the list. Otherwise, they're.
Okay, yes.
We, we have a list.
I think in the office, there's got to be copies or asked for wisdom, because we've always had the list.
I can just print once on the website.
Yeah, right. Of TDS.
Yeah, I mean, the way they do it though, you got to go alphabetically and it'll, you can look up everything, you know, but they do have a basic, what's okay and what's not okay. And I put that on the haste happenings too, right before, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, but yes, sir, you have.
If you put it in the pace happening, we have a list, make sure they match.
Right.
Not this mismatch, it confused everybody.
Included our side. It's just, yeah.
I, I know, I read the, I read the webpage and this. It's kind of, kind of easy, but I interpret it.
Okay, anybody else have a comment?
On that, it's because the TDS was on their website, it shows prohibited and approved items. Right. Which is.
The same, odd.
Yeah. Want them to know.
Not agree with it.
Yes, ma'am.
I suggest we put prohibitive items as, and not what's allowed also, yes. And that's easier to enforce.
Excellent. Okay, any other comments? Thank you. Item four D, receive updated tech appropriate action regarding first years plan to install fiber lines within the city of Hayes. And there, they are. Back. Contacting us wanting to. Install fiber lines in my right away. And we. Uh. Contacted our city engineer. And given him also the. Documenta, documents that our prior Don had done with them a couple of years ago. And so. Uh, that's been a couple of weeks, we hadn't heard anything back. Uh, so it's, that's there, but they were real anxious at that time to get it done, they were like, please contact us. Before day or something, but now it's gone quiet.
Yeah, the only concern I have is that within our right away, we have a bunch of trees and. They start digging around the trees. They might, I don't know if they're going to dig trenches or going to bore, they bore, they might kill the tree, so. We need to have this special provision, I, I guess when the engineer review it, we'll ask our consultant city engineer to. Consider that and how are you going to mitigate that issue?
That is certainly very important.
Good point.
Yes, Rose.
And they already have lines and they're updating lines, is that correct? No, they're new, so they, and they're putting them on the east but correct. They will be subject to. They will be subject to us building them for use of the east but correct.
Beautiful.
They're asking for, requesting, requesting the options to them.
Yes.
Right.
But there will be fiber optic lines, this should be. The fast stuff. I'd enhance our lives.
Yeah.
Any, yes.
If we provide that, do they pay it fee upfront for access to the right of the lines for installation? What's the deal? Do we have anything in writing from them? To allow them to come into the city?
Now, but we'll. You know, this is the franchise fee and that right away fees are, are, I'm not sure about the. What we can charge and what we can't charge, it's the state, as usual, has inserted themselves and on the side, but.
The business.
Of the businesses and in some cases, we're not able to. Or a franchise fee. And so. Uh, so that's something I'm not sure if I, I can answer.
They'd be pretty harsh in the installation of the line, we said. This rocks quite a bit and even the trees, whatever's in their way, they'll just glow right through it.
And, and we need to make sure that we get reimbursed for all of their fishing. Yes, sir.
The other, the other thing, I thought there's, I think spectrum pays us a fee for their lights being in, in their right away. But I saw it in their fee, but the spectrum pays them, so. I don't know what it falls under the correct name on it, but there's a fee that they pay every month.
Yes, sir.
So.
They don't, it's, we get a franchise fees on a quarterly basis, so we do get franchise.
Yes, sir.
In fact, they're listed on the financials there.
Okay.
Yes, Rose.
It's in the law that they, they are required to pay. All, all utilities are required to pay for east vehicles. How they do that quarterly, monthly, I think is settled by the city.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure if this is mentioned, but there is in our packet. The letter that our city engineer, um, to.
Frontier.
Frontier. So. Some.
But it's eleven days. Actually, I think that's a line of communication will be a fair.
Whoa.
Yes.
Well, this is.
There's no.
They already have a notice to proceed?
No.
It says providers should be insured for the contractor installing the fiber. Note signs and door hangers will be distributed forty eight hours prior to construction.
They have to submit an application. How do you get all?
Right.
Yes.
Says right here that if they are a private property, it's their responsibility to notify the person, so. They won't just show up.
I'm going to see a copy of the application.
Fortunately, you would see.
I guess we can have the, our city engineer make a presentation when the application comes in.
Yeah.
And with what the recommendation is. And. See what they're going to dig up out there and where they're going, where they're going to put it. Whatever I wrote is a certain, not centered in a right away. So.
The, the objective of this agenda item is just to make you aware that this process is started again.
Okay.
Obviously, when they submit an application or, or some agreement, and then. We'll get the lawyers off, then we come in, we come to the council, yes, you have.
Uh, thank you, I did want to, I did want to mention a face that, as Mayor Davis mentioned, this. Um, was something that Dawn has originally handled, so we do actually in SharePoint that everyone has access to, we have some files. Where. Frontier has provided a presentation. So there's more of that documentation to review with more project specifics. In order to check that.
I looked, I saw the plans, I know, but the city engineers are going to have to make a recommendation based on some comments and lots of the plans.
Any other comments? Item four E, it's, it's got to consider and select engineer slash architectural service provider. To complete applications and project implementation for resident mitigation assistance. Fundies. Censored by the. Texas divisions of emergency management and, oh, they use water development force. The committee, this lady and myself and our assistant manager. Uh, Christine, and Christine's going to read us on the recommendation of our, of the committee.
So we have been working on this with Grant Works, who provided. Signs for how hosted the RFQ. We received four statement of qualifications, statement qualifications from four different firms, the committee met. We individually reviewed each of those statement packets and scored them. Uh, they, we reached out to their references, I reached out to their references as well, so there's a document with all the details of that. Uh, and after the scoring, the highest scoring firm was Breland Turk. So our recommendation as a committee is to select Breland Turk for this project.
Any questions? Yes, Rose.
That also will, uh, will that selection cover our other, this is about, uh. The water shed or whatever implementation, there was also the. Something with, there's another project, it covers both, correct?
The drainage project.
The drainage, okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
So they're the same project, right?
No, no. Favorite consultant.
Okay. A recommendation, you approve? We approve your recommendation?
A second.
A second.
Any other comments, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, discuss and take appropriate action regarding fees of, this is for, yeah. Feasibility study to mitigate the sand issues at Elliot Ranch. And Elliot Ranch continuing problem of sand. Uh, in the water. And, uh, it appears that some residents have. You know, here's how to say, and then it's a big issue and some residents, it's okay. And so our engineer. Uh, recommended that he do a study to see the feasibility of having a filter. Filter that, uh, that the water would go through before go to customers. And so, and he, he has. He sent a feasibility document that I have executed. To begin the study. Uh, executed because. That's in, that's like, yes. So it would cost up to fifteen thousand dollars to do the study. But to do, it's a continuing problem, you know, we spent a ton of money. Getting sand out of the tanks and then the, they didn't do that right and all the sand and filtered down into people's yard and. There was. Oh, a lot of trauma and probably the insurance companies. Uh, reimburse the homeowners and so that's been settled, thank goodness. But, um, so this feasibility study, hopefully they'll, they'll be here in this. Um, you know, we'll see, we have to say how much it's going to cost, but it's. It's always been my, my thinking is that we really have to. Take care of issues over there. As best we can. So any questions, there's no action that, that we need. Is that.
You'll be.
That's already. That misses the terms, but. Yes, ma'am.
Was the document signed via DocuSign?
What?
Was the document signed via Docu? Was the document signed via DocuSign? Was this another transaction agent?
Um, you can see on the left, we. It's my biggest.
Yeah, yes. May I just?
Have a huge DocuSign. Sign.
May I recommend that we date every document that we sign? It's physical, every time we sign any document, does they, okay, may I recommend that?
Yes, you may. And I will be. Important that. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think Dee may be on the line. I just wanted to. I believe the phone was on the line. I thought that was.
Oh, that's.
I thought that was maybe the. Through the line of the site, she said, I joined us today. But after she's been coming.
Dee, do you have any comments if you're there? Do you get it?
That's true.
That might just be, I don't know.
Right, and maybe so.
I've seen your name.
Okay.
Uh, okay, then we're moving on to Ford's lead. Discuss and take appropriate action on request by Mayor Davis. To appoint a committee to evaluate and make recommendation. On the water rates, the last two years we've looked at water rate. We uh, have raised them modestly. Cause again, water customers can get upset and. Kind of throw a monkey wrench into everything. Uh, and so. So that's, I, I still think our water rates are low. And would like to. Study and see how they are, we, in the past, we passed, we. Like compared them to Mountain City or Utah, kinda compared them to see how we fit in on things. And you know, one, if really you wanna do a big. Big change in water rates, you would have to do a professional water study, but that's very expensive. But the committee would uh consult with our city engineer about, you know, what's the best way to do it? If he's, has any suggestion of. Use that to do it and all. Consider that, so anybody would like to be on the committee?
I need a hydraulic.
Water, waters.
Okay, Rose.
Oh, well, I'm retired, I'm having the time.
How many people would you like on the committee?
Three.
Uh.
I'm gonna send it over.
Okay.
The Thomas, Rose and I?
Yeah.
Or would you like to be on the committee with Thomas and?
Uh, I think I might, uh. Might kind of be involved in, yes.
Okay, so would you like to sit three person?
Uh, let's do four people.
Okay.
Four people. It, it's important.
Yeah.
For.
Yes.
So, um, why don't we take a formal vote? Yes, you can.
Oh, there's gonna be a formal vote, I wanted to ensure that I have. That I have the right members down.
Formal question, Rose, William, Mary, okay.
Somebody locked in, make a motion.
I'll do that.
I'll second it.
I move.
All right.
I'll stay. One better.
Thank you. Um, so that's our new business. Uh, unfinished business receive update technical fact on construction of well number three, all country land. Don, you know, the last thing is he sent. Uh, a form to P C Q, and they had it blessed and then turned off, and then we could do another. Uh, but maybe we won't. Um, so anyone that I haven't heard from John off that.
A question and mayor may not pertain to that, but has anyone heard drilling every morning behind your properties?
I heard it this morning, I was walking. What is this, Jacob?
No.
It's the luxury RV park.
Really? Or did you?
No, they're not, they're breaking rocks, very rocky, they're digging.
They're drilling.
They're digging.
They're digging the lake.
They're digging the three acre lake, they're gonna stop.
Yeah.
So that's.
Uh, but.
Okay, okay, okay.
I mean.
However, we are gonna have hopes, maybe. Talk about this.
Important.
But I receive update and technical production regarding grant for. New generators will let uh, let Courtney know a little bit. Get the engineer. Notify our engineer, so hopefully we can get that started, I think it could be pretty efficient. Once we got the engineer, he's already actually done some work. On, on the generator. Before he, it, before I told him he hadn't been initially selected, so. Uh.
We anticipate this is maybe gonna be done by winter when we move this generator. Next winter.
That's uh.
Yes, yes.
Let's get them on board and then we'll ask for a schedule and emphasize that we're, we're prepared to be getting done by winter.
Winter twenty.
It takes, might take some time.
Yeah. Comments? Okay, item five J, receive update, click the population on possible grant applications. To assist in completion. Drainage project and again, uh. We'll select the engineer several. That's, that's kinda done. Really no other of that. Any comments, questions? Item five K, receive update and take production regarding age common development application to. Texas Commission on Environment Equality to create a municipal utility district and to paint mission to. Direct and operate the wastewater treatment facilities within the city of Hayes, its former E C J. I believe they have formally been. Approved for the left. And, and so it's the. The big item, the wastewater treatment system. I think we're in a schedule with.
Just Josh, can we talk all the, we've been getting all these emails, people have been. Posting the comments that they have, are we supposed to be doing that?
Intended comments.
Because most of us have been, many of us have been. And it's, yes. So are we supposed to be doing that as well? Yes, we are. Be nice.
I got a big package. Except for my.
Yeah, I got it as a mail and an email. Well, what's the deadline?
I'm not sure. Sure, it's not. So I, I have, I have not talked to our city attorney about this issue. You know, I think if there were. Something. Important, he would contact us and I guess. Any, any other questions on this important item?
I, I guess you, I'll go to the public attorney and see what the deadlines are for.
Must be.
In the letter? I read it, but I forgot, I forget the date.
Let's circle back. Let's very briefly circle back regarding. Elliot Ranch and the sand issue, you just asked them to rewrite, have any questions, he said no, not at the time, okay.
Uh. Item five.
Five?
Yeah. Had to go through an agency. Receive update and take a production regarding possible changes to. Uh, sixteen ninety two north, if in sixteen twenty six, I believe that's the daycare place.
Michael's school.
Yeah, I, I haven't gone by there. It basically just like, I know this way, that's kind of a. A large gate there.
Maybe provide some context. I don't know if the council is aware, but um. He accidentally found out that there was a new school that opened within our E T J and it's at this. Uh, address sixteen ninety two, um, twenty six. And it's a micro school, I believe they also do kindergarten, so not completely a free school. Um. And so we touched base with our attorney regarding the school because, you know, there was no permits filed. And like you said, we happened to find out about it, um. So within the meeting of our attorney, he notified us about House Bill two, four, six, four, which recently passed. I believe it became effective at the beginning of September and that house bill. Uh. Is about in-home businesses and it's basically supports in-home businesses. And makes it to where an in-home business is not required to. Play by the same rules as other businesses, so cities can't force them to get special permitting. Great, so that's kind of where we are with that is we were trying to figure out, you know. What the zoning is for the property and then whether or not it would be considered an in-home business. And our attorney believes that it is considered an in-home business, so that they're not required to have permitting.
Yeah, yes, sir. But our city code, um. It's residential. Anyway, city code requires, from our city code requires, they're gonna do a business to notify us, right? Your business?
Right, our city code requires, I believe, an application process and permitting. Um, but House Bill two, four, six, four. Now they say they do not have to do that, it's in. Right, in-home business.
Oh.
Really?
Uh, yes, Rose.
I haven't read the bill and I should, I guess, but does that also apply to building a structure on their residential property?
I don't believe. I think there would be more to that, because I think that that, it may not be considered an in-home business at that point if they're creating an additional structure.
That's what my thought would be.
The bill does touch on that they cannot have. Uh. It cannot create excessive traffic, it cannot create, um. I think there was one.
Always.
Noise, excessive noise, I don't, it doesn't impact any of those things.
Who regulates this business though, like what, they have to have some regulation, it's a.
Right, which we did talk about, their safety issues. Right, I think that was one of the questions that we actually posed to our attorney and he was saying. Mayor Davis asked, you know, about liability for the city saying, hey, exactly that, we're concerned for the safety of the children. Um, but he was saying that that's actually the exact opposite, the city is not liable because the business has to. Be in accordance with other licensing because it's a school, like state license, so yeah. So as we, they would oversee it, state licensing would oversee it. But we did talk about maybe just going over and introducing ourselves and. You know, they're gonna have a trunk or treat, I saw.
Are they?
They are.
You should go.
It's called in the moment, my first school.
In the moment.
Yeah.
Oh, look. This, I guess the question is, is the homeowner supposed to have a home business or they are supposed to own the property? They can run it out. Homeowner? I'm not sure.
Right, I know the question, cause they, from, from our understanding, they're not the owners of the property, the owner of the property is a. An LLC. But would, I believe that they're tenants.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to comment that I do welcome that business, like I, of all the businesses that can be in the city E T J, I'm happy that it is something that can benefit our community.
Yeah.
Hey, I, on that note, item five M, receive update and take appropriate action regarding car. New range of L C I, I have no update to some videos.
Why is this item, why is this item on the agenda?
I want to know. I, I think it's an ongoing project and. And we have an interest on it because of. Uh, the way they do that.
Carpenter Ranch, and we're not referring to this property, correct?
What?
The, already, I believe, isn't. Yes, the R V part.
This is called Carpenter Ranch?
Yes.
Be on your, something.
The noise.
Right.
Other plans don't list it as Carpenter Ranch.
I think they do.
The documents that, or when they submitted documents, they say, saying that they were getting out of our E T J. Or was Carpenter Ranch, I received. So that's why.
Thank you.
Yeah. So with that, the.
A follow-up nation, might just have a meeting that we adjourned at change of.
A second.
All right.
Articled Rose, the Marco's birthday.
Thanks y'all, I got it awful.